The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Hubbard, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Eighteen present. You have a quorum.
A quorum being present, let us pray. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Dispense with the, there's no special order of the day, any introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 23rd.
Greg Meyer, as always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
Any further introduction of honored guests, any further introduction? Approval of the minutes, Alderman from the 23rd, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes.
I did, anyway, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of the January 13th meeting.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we approve the minutes from January 13th, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We will dispense with line item seven. Informal calendar, does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Anyone want to take any bills off any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
We have none.
We will dispense with line item 11 then, reference to committee.
We have none.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of the HUDs Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill Number 122, introduced by Alderman Kotar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated September 27, 2022 for the 718 through 720 Lumiere Place and 212 Morgan Street area. Board Bill Number 124, introduced by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated September 27, 2022 for the 2953 to 2957 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive area. Board Bill Number 127, introduced by Alderman Kotar. An ordinance extending the term of the existence of the Riverside Community Improvement District containing servability clause and containing emergency clause. Board Bill Number 142, introduced by Alderman Kotar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November 15, 2022 for the 2 Gateway South redevelopment area. Board Bill Number 157, introduced by Alderman Page. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June 28, 2022 for the 1900 through 1926 Carr Street area. Board Bill Number 163, introduced by Alderwoman Spencer. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December 13, 2022 for the 2616 Cherokee Street area. Board Bill Number 167, introduced by Alderman Grass. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December 13, 2022 for the 4974 Lindell area. Board Bill Number 169, introduced by Alderman Kotar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December 13, 2022 for the 704 through 710 North Second Street area. Board Bill Number 170, introduced by Alderman Kotar. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December 13, 2022 for the 909 Chestnut Street redevelopment area. This is the extent of the second reading and report of standing committees.
We will dispense with line item 14, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill Number 146. Introduced by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of $500 for other goods and valuable consideration. A quick claim deed to remiss, release, and forever quick claim unto the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs certain city-owned property located in City Block 3709, which property is known and numbered as 3739 Windsor Place, St. Louis, Missouri 63113, in the City of St. Louis, Missouri. Board Bill Number 133, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus. Pursuant to the ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394. An ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 4500 through 5400 blocks of Geraldine, the 5000 through 5200 blocks of Thecla, and the 5200 through 54 blocks of North Euclid in the Mark Twain neighborhood. The 4800 through 4900 blocks of Lee, the 4900 block of Farland, the 4900 block of Margareta, and the 4000 through 4300 blocks of North Euclid in the Penrose neighborhood. The 5100 through 5200 blocks of Ashland, Lexington, and Palm, and the 3000 through 3400 blocks of Geraldine in the Kingsway West neighborhood. The 4700 through 4800 blocks of Ashland, the 4700 block of Lexington, the 16 through 2800 blocks of North Euclid, and the 29, I'm sorry, the 29 through 34 blocks of North Euclid, and the 3000 through 3400 blocks of Shreve in the Kingsway East neighborhood. Board Bill Number 134, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus. An ordinance directing the director of streets to prohibit parking or standing on the west side of North Euclid between St. Louis Avenue and Ashland, and the east side of North Euclid between Ashland and Natural Bridge, and requiring the director to post signs. Board Bill Number 135, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus. An ordinance pertaining to the commercial semi-trailer trucks, also known as semis, or tractor-trailer trucks, prohibiting such traffic during certain hours on Kings Highway Memorial Boulevard from the north boundary of Lexington Avenue to the south boundary of Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Exempting from said prohibition, emergency vehicles, including privately-owned tow trucks when providing emergency services to non-commercial vehicles and vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of less than 26,000 pounds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 136, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus. An ordinance prohibiting parking of commercial semi-trailer trucks, calves for semi-trailer trucks, or the cargo or flatbed pars of a semi-tractor trucks, also known as semis or tractor-trailer trucks, on Kings Highway Memorial Boulevard or on parking lots and/or property abutting Kings Highway Memorial Boulevard from the north boundary of West Florissant Boulevard to the south boundary of Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, exempting from the said prohibition, emergency vehicles, including privately-owned tow trucks when providing emergency services to non-commercial vehicles and contain the emergency clause. Board Bill Number 140, introduced by Alderman Grass. Pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394. An ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 4300, 4400, 4500, and 4600 blocks of McPherson Avenue, 400 block of North Taylor Avenue, 300 and 400 blocks of North Boyle Avenue, 51 and 52 blocks of Washington Place, 6,000 and 6,100 blocks of Washington Boulevard, 58 and 5900 blocks of Pershing Avenue, and the 400 block of North Newstead Avenue. Board Bill Number 150, as amended, introduced by Alderman Page. Pursuant to the ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394. An ordinance directing the street directors to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on certain blocks in the 5th Ward. Board Bill Number 151, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Walker. Pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394. An ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on certain blocks in the 22nd Ward. Said blocks are the 5600 through 5700 block of Greer Avenue between Clara Avenue and Goodfellow Boulevard, and the 4,000 through 4,200 block of Darby Street between Natural Bridge Avenue and Penrose Street in the 22nd Ward. Board Bill Number 152, as amended. Introduced by Alderwoman Keys and Alderwoman Boyd. Pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394. An ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on certain blocks in the 21st Ward. This is the extent of the perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the 25th, you're recognized on the motion for the perfection consent calendar. Please state the rule with which your point of order pertains.
Wish to take my board bill 133 off of the perfection consent calendar.
Okay, 130, you said 133?
That is correct, I have an amendment.
It's on everyone's desk.
Please place 133 at the end of the regular perfection calendar. Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, I move that we adopt our perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the 10th, that we adopt the perfection consent calendar, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Number 177, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus.
Alderwoman from the 1st, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 17, or Board Bill 77.
I'm sorry, because I thought she said 177, that's what I was looking for. Okay, Madam President and members of the board, I had Board Bill 177 moved off of the perfection consent calendar back in December, and then when we came back, it was not on the calendar, the agenda for last Friday. So I did go and speak to some people about, the Alderman from the, I guess, 16th raised a question about what would happen if somebody got found guilty under the board bill I was passing, and it was a valid concern. I went to check on it, and didn't want to make it mandatory that people would be punished twice for something they did. Found out that that was not mandatory, and so I am now requesting that Board Bill 77 be passed out of, passed on by the board of Aldermen.
Perfected.
Yes, thank you, I'm running because I was late today. Perfected by the board of Aldermen.
Do we have a second? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Alderman from the 12th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 77. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
I'm trying to see, I don't see it on here again, maybe I'm looking at the wrong, 55. Formal second reading, 136, 35. Oh, here it is, I'm sorry. Okay, Board Bill 77 is an ordinance to close certain alleys in the Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Penrose, Mark Twain neighborhood. But instead of going through individually and doing as people have done in the past, it authorizes whoever the Alderperson is in the alleys neighborhoods, and I didn't use wards on purpose because I knew we were coming up with the change in who would represent different wards, and it authorizes whoever's the Alderperson to close alleys, but they put, it prohibits it without happening, without posting that the alley is going to be closed, who could be in there. It also allows you to close one end. I went across much of the city, and I know in the 17th Ward they have alleys that are closed at one end. Specifically, if you go to STLTV and look right across the street, there's an alley that is closed at one end right between St. Louis University and the next street over. There are many up and down Union that are closed at both ends, we don't intend to do that. The reason why we're having to do that is I have a lot of my, several of my neighborhoods touch I-70, and the dumping is just unreal. And by the time you pick the trash up, we're sending the city back out to do it over and over and over again, and we're spending an extraordinary amount of money on something that as simple as closing the street, giving it, putting a mule on it, which is what opens the gate, giving that code or card to the refuse department, because I did check with the refuse department, and they, that's what they get, either a code or a card. Then they can go up and down the streets, I mean alleys, and they are then able to get in. But it prevents a lot of people from coming in those alleys, because all of a sudden now, if you try to dump, if it's closed off, you now have to back out. So even in streets where we had traffic problems, when we closed them, it ended that. So this is just a tool to try to stop the dumping. It's going to be a test actually in my ward. I started talking to the current mayor when she was the treasurer about this, because we were trying to get cost estimates of what it would cost to do something like what we use, our arm that we use when we go in and out of the parking lot that we park on when we come to the board. We also looked at some gates, we looked at the cost of the mules, which is what opens the gate. Decided it was something that could be done out of the ward capital, and so we've identified several alleys that we want to test this on. We're not going to do it in all of the alleys in the ward, but test it to see for those communities and neighborhoods that abound I-70, which is ours. And I know that I-55 has that problem, some of the people who have touched I-40 have that problem. It is to try to see if we can stop this dumping. We have to do something. Ever since we put dumpsters in the alleys back in the 80s, people start thinking of the alleys as a place for them to do illegal dumping. And that could be just somebody who lives on the alley, which you will soon find out if it's that person, if you close the alley. Or oftentimes, in my community, it's people who zip off the highway, live in the county, don't pay their bills, and then they dump in the alleys, and we are overtaxing our trash department and cleanup and forestry, whoever cleans up. Because as soon as they get it cleaned up, they're doing it again. So we got to look at it a different way. For many years, we didn't believe speed humps would help. Now everybody's doing speed humps because it will help. If this works, I'm hoping to see this, not in every alley, but in the alleys where they have dumping, where people are driving through like a bat out of hell, that this would stop them and slow them down. Because alleys are really not required to be built for a neighborhood, and they were built as an access to the people who had garages on that alley. And people have taken them over as though that's their toll road or their place to be able to dump. And so this is a test, after driving all through the city and seeing the alleys, and if you don't believe it, drive the alleys or drive by the alleys that they have closed off, just one end, you don't have to close two. And all of a sudden, those alleys go from being dirty to very clean. And so to me, it's worth it. So we don't have to overtax our employees of which we are short of right now.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, I don't believe that the bill was read into the record.
Okay.
Could you read it before we take a vote?
Yes. Board Bill Number 77, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus. An ordinance to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by prohibiting the use of alleys by operators of motor vehicles for drive-through traffic in the following neighborhoods. Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Penrose, Mark Twain. Requiring the posting of those allowed to use the alley containing a penalty clause and an emergency clause.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Alderman from the 12th, that we perfect Board Bill 77. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. 26 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion for the, from the Alderwoman from the 1st on the perfection of Board Bill 77.
Board Bill Number 145, introduced by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress, except as noted, under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein.
Please place Board Bill 145 on the informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill Number 82, committee sub, introduced by Alderman Vicaro, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Peel, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Evans, and Alderwoman Schweitzer. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Public License Number 117-2, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received for the implementation of an emergency vehicle traffic signal reemption system to enable emergency vehicles to request preemption of traffic signals en route to the destination to provide green lights for the approaching emergency vehicles and move traffic lines through the signals in front of the, in front of emergency vehicles. Authorizing contracts and other documents to expend the funds to the extent received containing a servability clause and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 23rd, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 82, committee substitute.
So we've talked about this, and every time it's come out with 100%.
Alderman, do you want to make a motion?
Oh, sure, I make a motion that we perfect Board Bill 80, committee, 82 committee substitute.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by the Alderwoman, or Alderman from the 3rd, that we perfect Board Bill 82, committee sub. Alderman, you may proceed.
So we, we voted on this, it's come out with, in fact, it's come out with everyone signing on it. It simply saves lives. It allows the emergency vehicles to get through these. We've had ambulances hit, we've had, we're being, we've been sued over people who've been hit in those ambulances. We've had five people die from these kind of incidents. So I would ask that we perfect this today, then it has to go to E&amp;A for their consideration, but I would just ask that we perfect Board Bill 82, committee substitute.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we perfect Board Bill 82, committee substitute. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. 26 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 23rd to perfect Board Bill 82, committee substitute.
Board Bill Number 119, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Howard. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 60347, approved April 20, 1987, now known as Section 3.06.090 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, and enacting thereof a new ordinance relating to the same subject matter, amending Section 2 of the ordinance number 61090. Approved November 22, 1988, now known as Section 5.19.020 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis relating to automatic expenses and containing a servability clause.
Alderwoman from the 14th, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 119 as, or 199 as amended.
119.
Or 119?
Yes, ma'am.
Says 199 on my.
Okay. Madam President and esteemed colleagues, I would like to put Board Bill 119 as amended before the body. Board Bill 119 as amended, as stated.
Alderwoman, would you like to make a motion to perfect?
I would like to make a motion to perfect.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 119 as amended. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
The board bill raises the Aldermanic salary to $72,000 per year. Due to the fact that we're reducing the board to 14 members, this money is already appropriated and part of the budget for the board of Aldermen. It will not provide any more expenses to the City of St. Louis, and will increase the salaries so that Aldermen, you know, are making enough money that they can provide a living for themselves and serve their constituency.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yeah, I just want to stand in strong opposition to this bill. I think the Aldermanic salary for a part-time job is more than adequate. And I've been opposing this all along. It's a part-time job, it's a slap in the face to every city employee that an Alderman is going to make more than a police officer, more than a firefighter, more than a paramedic, more than the people that pick up our trash, more than the people that do our streets. I am in strong opposition to this. I want a roll call vote on this.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 12th.
Test, test, test. Is this one working? Okay, good, oh, thank you. Perfect. So I am also, to echo my colleague from the 23rd, inclined to stand in opposition to this solely on the basis of it not making the position full-time. Would you like me to move to another mic, madam? Oh, is it low?
You need to talk into the microphone.
Yeah. During a call, you always want to stand in the very back and put things as close to your face as you can. Is this better, Alder, to your colleagues?
It might be better with your mask off.
Oh, fresh. Listen, I'll take any compliment I can get in this role, Alderwoman, thank you. Excellent, so sorry, thank you. Again, to reiterate, I am likewise inclined to stand in opposition to this solely on the basis of it not making, sort of defining the role as more full-time. You know, I reflect on my previous career, my preceding career, and hopefully my following career come April, in public libraries and art institutions, where one does not work in duty to the public, in duty to the public's access to information. where one does not work in duty to the public, in duty to the public's access to information or the arts for the salary, but instead for the, the richness that comes with such a prestigious role, or a role that I consider prestigious. So, I likewise agree that, that it feels somewhat self-serving, though I can recognize that, yes, when this current salary was introduced back in the eighties, I believe, if not earlier, that it would be adjusted for inflation closer to the number that we've put before us, but again, the role and its, its responsibilities have grown immensely since the eighties, I would say, especially in a, in a world that is increasingly interconnected, where our actions can be immediately communicated through all the corners of the earth, and where we have to consider such weightier responsibilities than just, than what necessarily our predecessors had to, both with more tools and more responsibility. So again, I, I'm inclined to oppose this, to echo my colleague from the twenty-third, solely on the basis that as someone who's had a career in public service and, and a career in, sort of not-for-profit organizations and so on, it somewhat makes me uneasy. And I respect that you've put this forward, Alderwoman Howard, I do believe that you've put a substantial amount of work into it. It is excellent. Oh, sorry, is that better? So anyway, with, with that, as well as my reluctance to actually kiss the microphone, I would yield back, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the eighteenth.
Ah, thank you, Madam President, ah, thank you, Board of Alderpeople. When the issue of ward reduction came up, it was clearly inferred that the taxpayers would save money by cutting the Alderpeople. There were one of the false, there were one of the ways that many of the ward, that were encouraged to vote to cut the wards. It is totally hypocritical for some of the same people to sit silently and hope to collect a double check after the wards are cut, when in fact, we would get, we as taxpayers would get less services. We will pay more money because we're going to have to have administrative staff, which the same Alderpeople who promoted this, especially in South Saint Louis, let me be perfectly frank, and in the Central West End. And some of them sit silently in North Saint Louis, said absolutely nothing, organized nobody, and now they're talking about more money is costing the taxpayers again. More money, less accessible to Alderpeople, less accountable to Ald, to the citizens, and also, it will be, and doubling the wards, yeah. They will be doubled. But, let me make it crystal clear. If a person doesn't want to work for the same salary that many people who were complicit, because you were complicit if you didn't say anything and go out and organize the same as you would organize and get elected and educate the people about the fact that it's going to cost more. Ah, so therefore, I, of course, there will be doubles of work, which I have advocated since nineteen eighty-three. I fought against ward reduction for that very reason. That it was, it's a half-time job. I know the wards would be cut and the constituents were getting a good deal with twenty-eight wards. In fact, if we had fifty-six wards, we would get a better deal because the highest number of people represented in Florence, and I think it's the highest number of people, they, they have about six thousand people per Alderperson, and the rest of the people in the county have less than that, and the other thing is that the mayors, they have fifty, they have almost, I think, a hundred, close to a hundred mayors, Alderpeople close to six hundred. What is the point? The point is, I have to, in, in good conscience, oppose the raise for Alderpeople because of the pre, of the fact that they did not explain to the voters that actually you, you will be paying more in taxes, but you have less access to your Alderpeople. You will be able, you won't be able to hold the Alderpeople accountable as well because of the fact that they will be busy, they will need more money to run the wards. So therefore, they will, some of them will be raising money from people with money, as you know, the people with money are business people, who are going to be, have more access than the voters will again, and those will be the very people who don't live in this city, who don't care anything about anybody except making some money off the city. Let me be crystal clear, they are not in love with citizens, they're in love with money. That's what the people who, the capitalists are in love with, money. This is all it's about. And the other thing is you will, you won't be, they won't be as accountable because it will cost more to run for an election, it costs twice as much for everything. And they, and so, the voters again, will, are to lose, the citizens, the taxpayers, like, I won't be running again, but I will be paying taxes, I will be active in my community, and this will not make anybody any safer. By the time that you're going to double this salary, if a person doesn't want to work for the salary that we're currently being paid, since this is the, since this is why, this is what we told the voters we were going to do, save you some, let me summarize, save you some money. That's what, that was, what was said, if it wasn't said, it was implicit. And in some places, I got it from reliable sources, that it was explicit. But, those who didn't speak out against it are just as guilty, those who did not organize against and educate the voters are just as guilty, because it is, as Alderpeople, our responsibility to inform our constituents, to educate them, because the constituents don't have time and don't know the ins and outs of what is going on. But this is our job, so if you didn't do your job, those who will be, went, those who will win, if you didn't do your job, you shouldn't get paid the money. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I'd like to give you a day in my life, in the twenty-first ward. My day generally starts at about seven AM with my telephone ringing. Unlike some Aldermen, I return telephone calls usually the same day or within twenty-four hours. My day continues on, not only just taking calls and communicating with all of the various city departments, but driving to residence homes in my own vehicle, with my own gasoline, and I can't tell you how many tires I have replaced since I took this job in August. I can't tell you how many times I have gone to my preferred tire place to have a tire patched or plugged on my own dime. We talk about, and, and let me address something that the Alderman from the eighteenth ward said. I was with him organizing, communicating with my constituents about ward reduction meant. I collected signatures, I notarized signatures from other wards. So I did my due diligence to try to make sure that this ward reduction did not occur. But when I take a look at all of the things, and, and, and I'm going to disagree that the, the people who do this work, the people's work, are in love with money. We must live too. Gas went up for me just like it went up for everybody else. Food went up for me just like it went up for everybody else. This is probably the only corporate-type structure I've ever worked in where you're using your own personal vehicle and there isn't a per diem, ah, 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 coverage for that. We should be driving city vehicles with the city logo on them. We should be having a, or, or have a gas card that, that, that is being paid for. I use my own personal cellphone, and I give my cellphone number to literally everybody in this city. I work until well after nightfall every day, going to meetings, going and, and meeting with constituents, wherever I need to go. Earlier this week, I had a constituent with an issue, but because of her work hour and the different constraints of everything that I'm trying to do for my community, I had to drive out to Overland to meet with her, but she was important. Her issue was important. And so, I don't understand anybody. And in deference to the Alderman from the twenty-third, come on, let's talk about our personal finances. We are not all in the same personal, ah, financial groupings. No, we're not. There are some Aldermen in this room who are struggling, and that should not be, not if we are here to do the people's work. I love my community, I fight for my community, I would take off my earrings for my community. And how dare anybody stand here and say that if the, the number of hours, this is a part-time job, it hasn't been a part-time job for me from the day after election. If you had to pay me for every hour I work every day, my salary would be well over two hundred thousand dollars a year. Name your most famous basketball player, and I will tell you, I got this, I'm dragging it up and down my ward like, like you're dragging it up and down the court every day. So I am insulted that any Alderman would be against this measure. I work hard, and I can tell you that I know that most of my counterparts, and I don't know all of you personally, or what you do in your wards, but I can say that my North City sisters, okay? We got this, we doing this. How dare you? I've got to live too. I've got to pay bills just like you. Every bill that went up for every constituent in the City of Saint Louis went up for us too. We are trying and fighting for a quality of life for every citizen in this city, but we've got to have a quality of life too. And let's talk about the elephant in the room. We just had three gentlemen that ha, ha, are now in the system. We have to take a look, we're paying exorbitant salaries to executive staff all over this city. We are top-heavy administratively, whether people want to talk about that or not. But we're still not paying all of those services that our twenty-third ward, ah, all, twenty-third ward Alderman mentioned, and I agree with that. I'm going to fight for our, ah, ah, city workers to get a better salary. I'm going to fight for our police department. I'm going to fight for our fire department. Okay? But don't tell me that I'm not worth what I'm, I'm doing every day. I am worth everything, every day, I get out of bed, I'm about this, and by the way, my job doesn't stop on Friday evening. I'm Saturday, I'm Sunday, I'm the weekend. Okay? So, don't bring me that. With that, I yield.
Further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the Board. Um, oftentimes, new people don't want to hear, when people have been here for a long time, they talk about the good old days. Let me tell you, the good old days were not good when I came here in nineteen ninety-one. I had to take almost a ten thousand dollar pay cut from being a public defender, which is the lowest job pay that you can get in the, and be an attorney. But I did that after being convinced by high-ranking politicians, include a congressman and a state senator, that I needed to bring my advocacy inside the Board, instead of always being out in the street with my advocacy. And I did that, and I've been here, and I've been redistrict, and I've been gerrymandered, and I came back here. And when I came here, I made twenty-two thousand dollars, there, thereabout, and I, I pulled my check, I meant to bring it, I'm going to bring it next when we, if, when we, ah, third read and finally pass this. And now I make thirty-seven thousand dollars. That is ridiculous. We thought we fixed this thing by saying we would give us raises. We didn't fix it because what happened is the mayors gave the, ah, and we tied it to the employees like the Alderman from the twenty-third is trying to do now. But they got merit increases which didn't give us a raise. So we stayed and we stayed and we stayed at the same salary to two thousand ten, twelve, depending on when you ran. And even if you raise something, if you don't pass this before people run, then, um, what happens is, you have to wait, if you're even four years, if you're odd and you run, you can get your raise in two years. Now, being here as, for as long as I have, it's interesting to me that we don't also have a bump for people who are the chairs of committees, because it's a lot more, um, responsibility when you're the chair of a committee and to make sure stuff moves and people get their bills heard. In other legislative bodies, they do. Um, when I hear the eighteenth ward Alderman talk about how we were opposed mostly in North Saint Louis to go into fourteen, and really still, I still am, and I got my ward back, the things I've been asking for, but it makes me sad, it makes me sad that I see people who have been so, um, such an advocate for the city not run, not be able to run because these wards are too big and they're out of control. The Alderman from the eighteenth knows that I was with him the whole time, in fact, in the first ward, we defeated it. We got out in our communities, two things we defeated. We defeated going to fourteen, because we know it is bad for North Saint Louis, and if you look at the wards that we have, we have all kind of craziness. I run, in the ward I'm running in, it is from Delmar all the way down to Baton to the riverfront, just crazy. And it's hard, and it's, um, tiring and exhausting, and, and it costs a lot more money. I am so surprised that advocates wouldn't have wanted to stay at twenty-eight, because then you have small wards where people have a voice. The bigger your wards get, then you start to oftentimes cater to the people who have the loudest voice or have the most votes. And that's not fair, that's not what we were about. And we were based on, the Board of Aldermen is based on, um, ah, the United States Congress. And the Congress, no matter if our population goes up or down, stays the same amount of people. So there were a couple of falsehoods that people sold. One, that we were going to save, save money, and which we all said, that's not true, because we all told everybody, this is what's going to happen. When you, and if you go to fourteen, you're going to have to increase the salary. You're going to have to have staff. You cannot not do that, um, because it's too much. We're not like the state reps where we close in May and we're gone. We're not like the state reps where we are unavailable. People can get you, because you're not in Jeff City, so they see you in the grocery store, they see you, um, if you're eating dinner, or breakfast, or brunch, or wherever, they see you on the streets, or at, if you're shopping, they're there, and they grab ahold of you. Um, so, we are on, oftentimes, twenty-four, if not twenty-four hours, six or seven days a week in holidays sometimes. So, it is a full-time job. So when I have heard the Post-Dispatch and others describe this as a part-time job, I've never found that description anywhere in anything that we have, and it's a false description. The new Alderwomen who are in North Saint Louis have found out in a hurry how hard this is. I've been doing this for a long time, I obviously don't do it for the money. I am one of these people, ah, I call myself a feminist, but when it comes to finances, I am a kept person. Because if my husband did not make money in green energy, I couldn't have been down here all this time with the little money that you pay. In fact, lawyers could not be down here for the little money that you pay. And seven, when you're going to double the work of someone, and that's what you're doing, you're going to increase the amount of people that you report to, then you don't then say, well, you shouldn't make more money. No employee in the City of Saint Louis, if we doubled their responsibility and the people who reported under them would say, oh, no, I shouldn't get more money. And this is kind of making up for some of the money we should have been getting in the first place, and this is not an exorbitant amount. It is pretty much the amount, if you take the double the Alderman salary that you have now, since you're going from twenty-eight to fourteen, so thirty-seven and thirty-seven is what, seventy-four? So it's a little under what we should be making. The, um, President said something in committee that I totally agree with. She said, this, ah, and, and I'm paraphrasing her. She said, this should not be for just people who are wealthy. You should be able to run for office and be a part of this esteemed body by making your own salary, everybody doesn't have a husband, and especially if you come to the black community, they don't have husbands to take care of them. And my mother didn't raise me to be taken care of, okay? That is not how I was raised, I was raised as a feminist, so I don't, I, I'm kind of contrary to what, um, I was brought up to be. But I'm doing it because we sat down and we made an agreement that my skills were needed down here, that we don't have other black lawyers down here, look around, we got many white lawyers. I'm it. We used to have two, and the, ah, the slave administration couldn't stand for two black lawyers to be down here, so he put us in the same ward and gerrymandered me. And that was because the more people you have that can do research, the more you can represent your community, and the more you can do advocacy for your community. So I understand, I want to say to the Alderman from the eighteenth, why you feel the way you do, because you feel that they tricked the people, and they did, I understand it. But you know, I didn't trick the people, okay? And you know, I worked and I advocated and And you know, I worked, and I advocated, and many of us down here, we worked. But sometimes you have to just go home and deal with the realism of what it is. And the realism is, we're at 14. And I beg any of you all who think that's a great idea, to come drive these North St. Louis wards. And then maybe, I always advocated if we couldn't go, um, if we couldn't stay at 28, maybe come to 20. When I come back here, I'm gonna sponsor a bill, cuz I'm coming back, that maybe we go to 20. This is not a good idea. It is severe, it is something that was in somebody's head. Every black Alderman down here for the last few years have said, "This is not a good idea." Nobody would listen to us, okay? It is not. And we're also losing skilled people, or people who are interested, who now get the first taste, and now you're cutting them all out. Um, you got, in many of the black wards, you got three black Aldermen running against each other, whereas in white wards, you have people that don't have anybody running against you. That is wrong. Now, some people, uh, heard the President say, he, uh, drew the, helped draw the wards so he could control the people. That's not illegal, believe it or not. Under the law, him doing that, all legislative bodies do that. What's illegal is when you gerrymander by race and some other things, like what was done to me. Now, that's illegal. But people are like, "Well, yeah, we could draw new boundaries." Um, but they're not looking at, it's a bad thing in the first place. And because it may not affect you, and you may be in a small, compact ward, which is what I was in when I was gerrymander, you don't really understand it. I wish all of you all could do what they're doing in, uh, Neighborhood Improvement Specialists, uh, they are now having the Neighborhood Improvement Specialists move. So I now have a lot of white Neighborhood Improvement Specialists who are like, "Oh my God, I didn't know this went on," cuz they haven't had to deal with that. Um, so, if all of you could just have to come, who think this is a great idea, and serve North St. Louis for a few years, you would run back down here to this Board of Aldermen and say, "What the heck was I thinking? This is not a good idea." It is not. Um, I wish you would come and join us, but I understand why you can't. I am in full support of this bill, I asked, but my name be put on it, and I didn't do it hypocritically, I am running for office. So, the people can then judge me if they think that this is what is, was a good idea. I don't wanna hide behind it. Um, it is not right that people cannot run for office, and they gotta depend on somebody else, or we squeeze people out. Um, I thought that the amendment that the Alderwoman from the 14th brought forth was a very valid amendment. If you say you have to work full-time and you can't work any other job, that would prevent most lawyers from being down here, cuz most lawyers could not work down here for that amount of money, okay? So, that would get rid of lawyers. This, contrary to what people believe, this is not a job about seeing if my alley is clean. That's part of constituent service that you do, that's not really ours. It really is about reading this legislation, understanding the legislation, writing legislation. It is a legal job, and lawyers know how to do that. But we get pigeonholed oftentimes into things that are not even our responsibility. I do as much as I can, because I know the frustration of citizens who feel like they pay their tax dollars and don't get what they need, what they need. I wanna say thank you to my constituency, cuz we've been talking about this, and they've been very supportive and said, "Alderwoman, we think you deserve that, we know you work." Okay? So, they have been supportive. And so, um, I'm, often, my friend from the 23rd Ward, we agree on a lot of things, but I'm glad to see there's a mixture to just not drawing down the line strictly, "Oh, I'm on this side and I'm on that side." We got different people from different walks of life agreeing or disagreeing about this particular bill. Um, I said this before, and I'll say it again, sitting at this very desk, I made a very big mistake back years ago, when I voted against changing our pension. And I thought I was doing good government, I was doing dumb things, okay? But now to come back, all these years later, and, uh, every time I see the former Alderman from the 25th, I always apologize to him, cuz he sponsored that bill. I just thought I was being so good and smart and saving the people. It's not that amount, large amount of money, we don't spend any more, in fact, we spend a few pennies less than if we had 28 Aldermen. Yes, we will have assistance, we should've had assistance in the first place, especially when you look at that we are tasked with doing so much of the things that are really the mayor's job. There's nothing wrong with respecting yourself. If you don't respect yourself and what you're worth, then nobody else will. Women have done that for a lot of years. We didn't get the kinda money that people made, and we were, um, chest-high if we stood up and said, "We oughta make a certain amount of money." So, this is not trying to do a grab for some large amount of money. And I would la- end with this, when this first started, when we were comparing salaries back in the eighties, eh, most people could only make $25,000 a year. The other people, I'm talking about the mayors and other people, now they make hundreds of, 130, 150, and a lot of people, there are several people who work for the city make more than the mayor, which I kinda don't like, but they do. And, but the Aldermen have just had their salaries frozen. And then anytime you wanna talk about doing something, there's somebody always coming to attack you and to say, "Oh, you're self-aggrandizing, or you're trying to pay yourself, or it's not fair that the police don't make as much as we're talking about making." It's not fair that our secretaries make more money than us either. That's a thing that you don't see any place just about, okay? The secretary making more than you. So, um, I stand in support of this bill, I think it's a fair amount. Um, for those people who believed they were gonna save money, that never was gonna be the case, there were a lot of other reasons. The original people who pushed this, pushed it, and it was not because you were gonna save money. It's because they wanted to wrest control of the city of St. Louis from certain people, and that's what they did. And with this new, um, uh, board bill that goes to 14, we're gonna lose black representation. We never got 14 black Aldermen like we should've done in 2001. But now we're gonna lose black representation in a city that's approximately 50/50. And I'm not talking about if somebody white picks a black person that they're gonna support, I'm talking about pure black representation, unblack representation, cuz it doesn't make a difference what white people think. The people in my ward get to elect me, and there's no influence from outsiders who can make me afraid to take certain positions, because, ooh, certain people won't support you. So, we're gonna lose that. If we get four, five black Aldermen out of 14, we will be lucky. It is not a good bill. I agree with you, Alderman from the 18th, but it's also not good not to pay us something that looks like a responsible salary. And again, I rise in total support of this, and I'm asking everyone, um, to please support this bill and not, uh, get caught up in who doesn't make enough. I agree with Alderwoman from the 21st, and we'll fight for those people. And I have done it in the past with the Water Division, got them big raises. This is a good bill. Thank you. And I yield.
Further discussion, Alderman from the 28th.
Yeah, I just want to, um, I just wanna, I have, uh, right.
Mic is not working. Do you wanna try coming to the front one?
Hello? There we go. All right. No, I just wanna say that I am also rising in complete support of this bill, and I also wanna just say that I very much appreciate the comments from the Alderwoman from the 21st. Honestly, I agreed with every single word she said. I feel exactly the same way as she does. I was sitting at my, at my desk, and, you know, I didn't think I had the courage to say it like she did, and, and I don't think I could say it as well as she did. So, I just wanna, um, again, say I have, um, uh, fully support this bill, I ask everyone else to do the same, and, um, I second all the comments from the Alderwoman from the 21st.
Further discussion, Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Frankly, I, I wish that this conversation happened years ago, so it wasn't politicized like it is now. Uh, I do wanna thank the Alderwoman from the 14th for, for bringing this. I know that it's not, uh, always the most fun topic, uh, in any legislative branch. Uh, I think we do need to set wages in a way that we attract professionals. I think that, uh, serving in this body should be available for everyone, not just independently wealthy people and retired folks. However, I can't support this bill in its current form, uh, because I think we, we need to be giving raises across the board to city workers. Uh, I know we've said in conversations on, on, on this in, uh, in committee and in the past, that, uh, this is happening alongside, uh, raises for all city employees. Um, but so often, uh, you can have those discussions, and once, uh, you know, you're comfortable and, and, and well-fed, it gets easy to, uh, forget about, uh, other people and going back and, and pulling them up as well. Um, I, I will absolutely support a raise, uh, for us when we raise wages, uh, across the board. Uh, and I think that our wages in, in this body should probably be tied to the average wage of a city employee. Uh, so, you know, if you wanna raise, great. A raising tide rises all boats. And, uh, so if you, if you need more money, so does the guy mowing the lawn, so does the, the cop, so does the firefighter. Um, we, we need to be looking at this holistically, making a hundred percent, uh, pay jump, uh, without taking into account the, the increased work that so many other city employees have had to deal with, with the labor shortages that we're, we're going through, uh, just doesn't seem like the right thing to me. I know that it's, it's frustrating, because this is something that we, we probably should, uh, address, and no, no legislative body can give themselves a raise, so, you know, for, for the next, uh, 14 people who are gonna be in, in this room, they won't be able to give themselves a raise. So if they're gonna have their, uh, their, their wage raised, it's, it's incumbent on us to do that. But I think it's, it's just not the right thing to do unless we're going to be raising the, the, the quality of life for, for everyone, uh, employed in the city, not just us. Uh, and with that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I get calls all the time that we need to raise police salaries, that we need to raise firefighter salaries, EMS, Parks Department, um, you know, various city departments need raises, and they do. I've yet to receive a constituent phone call that we need to raise salary for the Board of Aldermen. I, I think it's worth noting that public service can be a form of currency as well. I will be in opposition of this bill.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the 18th.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Board of Alderpeople. Uh, let me first say about, we, we often talk about black, we often talk about white. Uh, but let me be crystal clear. I look at, um, North St. Louis, I don't know how anybody can ask for a raise. Bad as it look, uh, and, and, uh, and, uh, I know somebody, I'm gonna get a lot of pushback about this, and I know folks will jump up and down. But, I think, before we give North or South St. Louis a raise, anybody, or Central West End, since the Central West End certainly was, has been pushing this for years about cut the wars, now they wanna raise that's gonna cost the taxpayer more money and they're gonna get less services. And I represent part of the Central West End, so I know that it's been pushed, it started being pushed about, uh, in 1983. Uh, I won't call the pers- uh, the Alderman's name, he's not here, but he did get transferred over from the Central West End to South St. Louis, and that's when the 28th Ward came into existence. But, I'm, again, I'm for proportional representation, that means that I think we should have equal number of representatives. But, from looking at North St. Louis, the representation has been totally ineffective. Uh, and until we get, and until North St., until the city of St. Louis, and North St. Louis in particular prove that it can improve the quality of life, which has been deteriorating, uh, for the last 50 years, and I want somebody to tell me it hasn't, because you can look and see. I agree that we do work. Uh, we work, and when I took this job, I was a Democratic Committee man for more than 20 years. I worked for free. And I worked more as a part-time work, I was a schoolteacher, and when I got my next job, was working as a Democratic Committee man and taking care of my family. So I'm used to working for nothing. And many of the other people that were committed people, that's not an issue when you're public, and I've been volunteering in the civil rights movement since I was 12 years old, that's for free. I've never, I never got to pay the penny for being a civil rights worker, and I shouldn't have had to be one, cuz I, my birth rights were being denied. But when I was born a citizen in America, I should've had all rights. But I've had to spend my whole, all of my childhood and mo- and all of my life working for free. So I don't want anyone, and everybody here, most people, know I've been working for free. They know it, if you, and, and, uh, they know I'm not, uh, making this up, since I was 12 years old, when they closed down, when we had to break in the Fairgrounds Park and they, to swim because we were, we are black. And they closed down that pool in 1958, it was Olympic-sized pool. Once we forced them to let us swim, they closed it down, concrete, poured concrete in that pool, and now we at, and it's about a fifth the size that it was then, only because we are black. So I know about, at 12 years, years old, when I fought to make sure that I got my, I was paying taxes, cuz when I went to the store and bought whatever I bought, and my parents were paying tax, my aunt and uncle and relatives were paying taxes, but we were not allowed to swim. So I know about, uh, working for free, that's when I started working for free, when I was 12 years old. So I don't want anybody to tell me about working for free when I was a committed man, and also I was an officer. I was a treasurer, I kept the money for the Democratic Party, so I did, wasn't only on the Central Committee, I did that for free. And I, when I left there, there had more money than I know of than any time, almost $70,000, so I must've kept pretty good books. But, the point I'm making is, so when we talk about raises, uh, list, those of you who were on the Central Committee that didn't, didn't get paid anything, don't forget, we didn't get paid, but we did do a good job. So it was a call, this supposed to be a calling. Also, uh, the population has decreased by, esp- and, for those who are complaining, North St. Louis especially, the population is a third of what it was when, uh, uh, in the 50s, in the 60s. So it decreased, so that's the reason that they, that, uh, they're cutting the war, that they justify cutting the wars, because we have a third of the number of people. But, and of course, uh, uh, the work has changed, but if you don't like the job, quit, don't run. Now, that's a choice you have. If it's too much work, like me, I can't do the job the way I wanna do it, I'm not gonna run. That's the choice I made, I can't give the constituent services. When I was teaching school, I'm a re- they doubled my class size, do you think they doubled my salary? No! You took this, and I kept, I'm not, uh, uh, they doubled the class size on me, on, on us. They didn't double the salary, but we, and, uh, but I kept on doing the job the best I could, of course, uh, so that's not, to, to those people who say, "Well, you're doubling my salary, I won't double it amount." No, when they doubled the teacher's salary, we did not get double the amount, we got the same pay. And we'd still, as dedicated servants of the public, we continued to teach school. And I do not think all the people should be prioritized. We have, when, when the sanitation workers, those trucks couldn't pick up their trash last summer, the people wasn't asking me about genti-tides, you wanna, you deserve a raise. They wanted that trash picked up. When it started flooding in the Central West End and the Fountain Park area and the 18th Ward, they called me, they didn't ask me about some raise. They said, "We want you Aldermen to get down here and get this flood taken care of, we don't care how you do this, we don't care how you get the trash picked up, we don't care if you go drive the truck. We want it done." I had to run out of the back door and, uh, kinda dress and sneak, I couldn't go on in the neighborhood, but the people want the trash done. They want these speed humps, they want the sidewalks, they want trees trimmed, they want grass cut. These are the fr- they want the place cleaned, the ginnet, the, these are the people who should be doubling, almost doubling their salary. I'm sick of people who, uh, putting, are talking about that people sitting behind a desk need more money. No, those right out there providing public services for our citizens, those are the people who need money, those are the people who sent me down here and told me what they want. Until the last day I'm here, I'm gonna stand with my constituents for constituent services. I'm for the most effective and efficient way of getting services directly to my constituent, and if, if it's not going directly to my constituent, I don't think you should get a penny raise. Thank you, Madam President, and I yield back.
Alderman from the 12th.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, I would just like to clarify and revise my previous statement on statement on the bill, if that's all right?
Excellent.
Excellent. So I do just want to come back and say that my inclination to oppose, right, so my leaning towards opposition is not based on the numbers. Because again, I believe that it was in the eighties, somewhere in the mid-eighties, that was the last time that we had a substantial raise here at the Board of Aldermen. And if adjusted for inflation, I believe that it would be more or less equivalent to somewhere around ninety-two, ninety-six thousand in terms of purchasing power. So my opposition is not the seventy-five thousand with the five thousand expense account. I would note that in Section Four of the Board Bill nineteen, one nineteen, as amended, it does clarify that we do indeed have a fund for expenses, of which, I mean miscellaneous office expenses, memberships, automobile and travel expenses are intended to be covered by. Now, with that said, it's very hard to fly to the other side of the country to attend, to attend legislative groups or so on so forth, on the monthly allotment that we are given, the monthly per diem, I guess, what would that be, per monthum perhaps? Hopefully, my Latin professor's not watching. But in Section Five, I would like to acknowledge, as many of my colleagues have reminded me, that Section Five does call on Aldermen to dedicate themselves to the official duties and obligations of their office on average, thirty-two hours per week for each year that they are in office. My issue is not, well, I do take issue with that, not that it's only eighty percent, and not only that general accounting principals would recognize that as being full-time employment. More so, I do think that it is disjointed, because my responsibilities as the twelfth Ward Alderman are incredibly different from the responsibilities of the, say, first Ward Alderwoman, or the twenty-first Ward Alderwoman. There will always be variance across wards, but it is a stark contrast, and I think that it is not only fair but necessary to acknowledge that. It does not preclude outside employment. Now, because I came from public libraries and publicly funded institutions, legally, I myself was precluded from holding this office and remaining with St. Louis Public Library. Now, this is going back to the Missouri Constitution, so on so forth, that's not this debate. I was more than happy to sacrifice my career in pursuit of this. And this board bill does not require that any of our new colleagues coming in the new Board of Fourteen are held to the same standards. And that is my issue. Yes, we can keep it at thirty-two hours a week. There's no mechanism to record that or enforce that, mind you. We are a self-governing office, currently have one with each of us, even though our secretaries do a phenomenal job managing five, if not six, Aldermen, even though our Neighborhood Improvement Specialists, and I used to have the best Neighborhood Improvement Specialist in the city, and I would take my earrings off for that, even still, they don't necessarily report to us. At the end of the day, I don't know how you all, my dear colleagues, have served your terms in office, but I have served as an office of one. I have served as an office of one wholly dedicated to this role. But there's no provision in our city law or in our operations that require me to do that. And that is my issue. Again, it is not an issue with the salary itself. I will acquiesce and agree that, yes, okay, thirty-two hours a week on average does indeed constitute full-time employment. It does not prohibit outside employment. And there's nothing to say that, okay, well, maybe in 2024, I come back to the Board of Aldermen with a new fourteen, and I say, you know what, my Neighborhood Improvement Specialist, whoever they may be, they can take care of constituent services. And you know what? Hopefully by then, the Board of Aldermen, each Alderman or Alderwoman would have their own legislative aide, like, okay, well, legislative aide, you can prepare the legislation, you can keep me up to date on the agendas, you can keep me up to date on the proceedings of this body. And then I will go and have outside employment. Now, not in a publicly taxpayer-funded institution. You're not gonna work at the zoo, you're not gonna work for the St. Louis Art Museum, you're not gonna work for St. Louis Public Library. So so sorry if you're a curator, an art historian, a librarian such as myself. But I could go work for, I mean, wasn't there news this week that Target's now offering fifteen to twenty-four dollars an hour as their range? Why wouldn't I just go work for Target? And why wouldn't Target take me on? Because, hey, I'm a government official, and I have that legislative capacity. And I do know that there's a provision in here regarding the, and this is also in Section Five on page three of three, Board Bill One Nineteen as amended. Aldermen may, this is line six, Aldermen may engage in employment in addition to their work for the City of St. Louis and its residents, provided that such additional employment does not interfere with their primary responsibility to the City of St. Louis and its residents, to satisfactorily carry out their duties and obligations as Aldermen or Alderwomen, I would merely note. What is the enforcement mechanism for that? We report to the public. We report to our constituents. But what if we're in a situation where our constituents aren't as clued in, or where they do not serve as, oh, I saw a weird face over there, I will retract that statement, dear colleague, I apologize. However, what if we are in a situation where that intended mechanism does not govern who is here at the Board of Aldermen? I mean, look at Congress, right? And I always think that we should look to Congress, because they really set the tone for the rest of the nation, don't they? Look at how many representatives we have in Congress across the nation that have been there for literal decades, longer than I have been alive, and have not been removed by their constituency, but are actively harming not only their constituency, but in some cases, our nation itself. My issue, and again, my issue is nearly an inclination of opposition, right? I'm merely inclined to oppose, is that there are no recourse mechanisms. There's, and I don't know the answer to that either. I'm presenting a problem without having a proper solution, for which I apologize. There is no perfect form of government. In fact, we call it, what is it, psycho-cyclosis? The cycle of, or aclo-cyclosis, the cycle of governments and so on so forth. There's no perfect system. I don't know that there can be a perfect system when one is working with people, with the public, and I mean, the complete mosaic, or rather, I'll say stew, I've always loved that metaphor by the Alderwoman the First, the stew that makes civilization. But it does make me apprehensive because, Alderwoman, as this bill is currently written, which again, I recognize could very well be in its most perfect form, I do recognize that. Again, I don't know that perfection is achievable. I could be elected in 2024 or 2028 and say, excellent, thank you for this eighty thousand dollar income. Because even with the expense account, we're not required by the Controller's Office of the Board of Aldermen to have separate accounts to manage. I believe we only have two colleagues, two out of twenty-eight colleagues here at the Board that utilize, and I know Alderwoman, I know Alderwoman the First, and I believe the Alderwoman the Eighth, both utilize sort of outside of the Board of Aldermen governed expense accounts. Whereas the rest of us, to my understanding, and I'm absolutely open to corrections, roll it into our salary, which is, and we do pay taxes on it, yes, we absolutely do pay taxes on it. So I could come in, and I could say, okay, excellent, well, now I have a staff, right? Hopefully, my own office, hopefully better support mechanisms and so on so forth. I've got this seventy-five thousand dollar salary with an additional five thousand dollar buffer for various expenses. And I'm gonna, I am going to go get a job elsewhere. Because maybe, sorry? Madam President, the Alderwoman of the fourteenth has a quick clarification for which I would happily yield.
Okay. Would you, Aldermen from the twelfth, would you, or Alderwoman from the fourteenth?
Fourteenth, I would like to ask him a question, or correct him.
Okay. Could we, would you give over the mic, and I'll recognize her, and then she can ask you a question? That would be the proper order.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you're recognized.
Point of clarification, you said salary of seventy-five thousand. The salary is seventy-two with five thousand in expenses. Okay, so it's a salary and the expenses. And it doesn't amount to seventy-five thousand salary and five thousand, eighty thousand. No, it is not eighty thousand dollars, seventy-five, seventy-two and five is seventy-seven thousand. So, I mean, I just want to not miss, yeah. I think I know what you're looking at, because I looked at it and it jumped out at me, but.
Alderwoman, would you like to inquire of the Aldermen from the twelfth?
What is it that you're, where are you gleaming, the seventy-five and the five?
Yes. So, thank you for the clarification, Alderwoman. And I will merely note that this was the one included in my perfection book. So I now wonder if this is an outdated copy, but it is on page two of three, line item fifteen. The, do you mind if I read it?
Go ahead.
Okay, so sorry. Starting at line thirteen, five, nineteen, twenty, fund for expenses used, there shall be appropriate and set aside annually out of the general municipal revenue, the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars for the members of the Board of Aldermen to be used for Aldermanic expenses. And now I understand my confusion.
Oops.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Alderwoman.
I did the same thing when I read this again today, and I've read it more than once, and I said, wait a minute, am I reading this wrong? There's a mistake. So, no, I just, I knew, I was like, oh, he's doing the same thing I did. Okay, no problem.
Okay. Alderman from the twelfth, you're recognized.
Thank you, to continue. And I would thank my dear colleague from the fourteenth, who herself was an educator before becoming Alderwoman, and very much in that stride corrected me on that. So, any statement where I've previously said seventy-five thousand salary with a five thousand dollar bonus for the total of eighty thousand should be recognized as seventy-seven thousand, with apologies. But regardless, my issue is with the fact that there is no mechanism to enforce. And again, it's in the bill, right? But legislation is, only serves to be words on paper. What is legislation if not enforced? You know, and I think we've run into that several times here in the City of St. Louis, where this body, this Board of Aldermen, preceding bodies, with the very best of intentions for our citizens and for our city, have produced some very wonderful legislation, very sensible legislation, that didn't have enforcement mechanisms. But we don't implement legislation. We present it, we pass it, we write it. We are the hand of the government, right? But we do not enforce it. So, again, that is an issue with our, that perhaps is not an issue, but is a facet of our system of governance, correct? So I don't have the answer to how we mitigate that. And I don't place blame on anyone for that. All of that being said, now therefore be it resolved within the Aldermen of the twelfth Ward. The Alderwoman of the first Ward, Alderwoman of the first Ward, made a very prescient point, which I do appreciate. And then she also pointed out President Green's previous statements and notes on, this position should not be one that solely the wealthy can hold. And I, myself, am in a position where I am voluntarily giving up my salary, because I do have a husband, or husband-ish, a fiance, not sure where we are, haven't set the date yet, you'll get an invitation, Alderwoman. Yeah, we've got the ring, but I bought the ring myself, so I'm gonna wear it. We are in a financial situation where I am able to essentially sacrifice roughly a forty thousand dollar salary, and that's scary. That is absolutely scary, right? Well, I can imagine that it's scary for any incoming Aldermen or Alderwoman to be potentially facing a Board of Fourteen where the wards have doubled, the responsibilities will invariably double as well, and to be facing a salary from the mid-eighties to early nineties, somewhere in that, from before I was even born. And I do believe that the Alderwoman the First, and by extension, President Green are correct in that, it does present a financial hardship. And it does ultimately, by merit of the salary, gatekeep a citizen's ability to serve their city. And while I don't know that I would vote for every citizen, I do, at my core, believe that every citizen should be able to see themselves in an elected role. I do believe the legislative branch of government is the most vital to our democracy. I believe that was intended by the framers. Ergo, all of that being said, with my appreciation for allowing my long-windedness, I now rise in support of Board Bill One Nineteen as amended, recognizing that we need not allow, I, the Alderman of the twelfth, need not allow perfection to be the enemy of good. And I believe that this is more than good and more than sufficient for that purpose. So with that, Madam President, I will respectfully yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you are recognized to close.
Mister, Miss, Miss, Madam President, I'm sorry, esteemed colleagues, I renew my motion.
Was moved by the Alderwoman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we perfect Board Bill Number One Nineteen as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Evans, Alderman Page, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Vommer, Alderman Lappi, Alderman Stevens, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Odenberg, Alderwoman Peel, Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Walker, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Grass, President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel, Alderwoman Davis. We have seventeen aye votes, eight no votes, one abstain.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to perfect Board Bill One Nineteen as amended.
Board Bill One Thirty-three, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus, pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, an ordinance directing the Street, directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the forty-five hundred through fifty-four hundred blocks of Geraldine, the five thousand through fifty-two hundred blocks of Thecla, and the fifty-two hundred, fifty-four hundred blocks of North Euclid in the Mark Twain Neighborhood, the forty-eight hundred through forty-nine hundred blocks of Lee, the forty-nine hundred block of Farland, the forty-nine hundred block of Margarete, and the four thousand through forty-three hundred blocks of North Euclid in the Penrose Neighborhood, the fifty-one hundred through fifty-two hundred blocks of Ashland, Lexington, and Palm, and the three thousand through thirty-four hundred blocks of Geraldine in the Kingsway West Neighborhood, the forty-seven hundred block through forty-eight hundred blocks of Ashland, the forty-seven hundred block of Lexington, the sixteen hundred block through twenty-eight hundred blocks of North Euclid, the twenty-nine through thirty-four hundred blocks of North Euclid, and the three thousand to thirty-four hundred blocks of Shreve in Kingsway East Neighborhood.
Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill One Thirty-three.
Madam President, members of the board, I have an amendment for Board Bill One Thirty-three. We had a couple of hiccups.
First, like to move to perfect?
Okay. So I move to perfect Board Bill One Thirty-three.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we perfect Board Bill Number One Thirty-three. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Okay. Madam President, members of the board, I have an amendment to Board Bill One Thirty-three. We had a couple of hiccups during the last few weeks. Alderwoman from the second had a board bill that somehow was not put in the Streets Committee as it should have been. And so in order to correct that, we amended my board bill to add her speed humps. And it should be an amendment on your desk, amendment number one to Board Bill One Thirty-three. And I move that we put amendment, Board Bill One Thirty, amendment to Board Bill One Thirty-three before us, so that we could.
Set as second by the Alderwoman from the eighth. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on Amendment One to Board Bill Number One Thirty-three? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman, you are recognized to close on the perfection of Board Bill One Thirty-three as amended.
Madam President, members of the board, I ask that you perfect Board Bill One Thirty-three as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we perfect Board Bill Number One Thirty- the eighth, that we perfect Board Bill number one thirty-three as amended. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vaumer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Va, Vicaro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Cone. We have twenty-five aye votes. I'm sorry, twenty-six aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to perfect Board Bill number one thirty-three as amended. Third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill one thirty-nine, and, and Board Bill forty-four, committee sub as amended.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we adopt the third reading consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vaumer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Twenty-six aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the twenty-fifth to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bill. Third reading report of engrossment and final passage.
Final, uh, I'm sorry, engrossment and final passage of Board Bill number one thirty-nine and Board Bill number forty...
No, it's forty-four committee substitute as amended.
I'm sorry, Board Bill number forty-four committee substitute as amended.
Alderwoman from the eighth, you're recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill forty-four committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we third read and final pass Board Bill forty-four committee substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number forty-four committee substitute as amended. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you so much, Madam President and members of the board. We've had a lot of discussion as this bill has moved through. We've had four committee hearings, and we've perfected it a couple of times. So, I thank you for all of your due diligence in looking this over. I think this is an incredibly important step forward for the city, in similar, similar to what the county has established. They, they, every ten years, vote a charter commission into existence, they work on things that need to be amended, and then those go back to the voters. Ours is very similar, our setup will be very similar to that, except it will automatically occur every ten years. And I believe that we have a much more robust back-and-forth appointment process to appoint members of the commission, that will be publicly transparent, and we have a required public meeting process, that I think the design is to involve as many citizens as possible throughout the process, as this is our governing document. So, I'm, I'm excited to bring this forward today, and I am happy to take questions or have more discussion at this point. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number forty-four committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vaumer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Da, Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Cone. Twenty-five aye votes, one no vote.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. We will dispense with line item nineteen, first reading of resolutions.
Resolution one seventy, introduced by President Green and Alderwoman Rice, last day, last day for the introduction of board bills for the twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three legislative session.
Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, we're withdrawing this resolution.
Thank you.
Resolution one seventy-one, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Green, responsible leveraging of settlement funds.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, you are rec, no, twenty-six, sorry, you are recognized on Resolution one seventy-one.
Thank you, Madam President, I would ask that the clerk could read Resolution one seventy-one.
Resolution number one seventy-one, responsible leveraging of settlement funds. Whereas the result of the, of a Rams football team owner Stan Kronke's and the National Football League's member teams and owners, the league, decision to move the team to Los Angeles in twenty sixteen, the city of St. Louis suffered the overwhelming brunt of the significant financial, economic, and other damage caused by Kronke and the league's contractual breaches, intentionally false representations, interference with valid business expect, expectancies, and unjust enrichment at their and the St. Louis community's expense. And whereas to secure appropriate compensation for these damages and restitution of unjust profits made at the region's expense, in twenty seventeen, the city joined with St. Louis County, the Regional Sports Authority, to sue Kronke and the league. And whereas the city, county, and RSA collaborated effectively and fought together for four and a half years to pursue justice and accountability for the St. Louis region, and ultimately won a historic settlement of seven hundred and ninety million dollars, five hundred and ninety, I'm sorry, five hundred and nineteen million dollars, of which were available to the city, county, and RSA following attorney fees. And whereas pursuant to the settlement agreement, the city shares of these funds is two hundred eighty million dollars, thirty million dollars of which is dedicated in contention upon approval by the Board of Aldermen to the Convention and Visitors Commission's Convention Center expansions project. And whereas these funds present and present in, an extraordinary opportunity to affect course-changing investments in the community, developed through intentional, thoughtful, and community-driven conversations conducted in partnership with elected leaders and community stakeholders. And whereas there is also an extraordinary opportunity to further grow these funds while building the framework for this, for these community feedback processes by responsibly investing these funds so as to take advantage of historically beneficial interest rates, such as by leveraging the current one-eighty-day Missouri Securities Investment Program rate of four-point-eighty-eight percent. And whereas city-elected leaders and community partners have recently and successfully implemented community-driven feedback opportunities to inform the allocation of the city's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, and whereas community input has always guided investments from ARPA plans to the city budget, and the city wants to hear from residents across St. Louis about their priorities to help these settlement dollars make an impact for generations to come. Now therefore be it resolved, the settlement funds community engagement process will be designed by the newly-elected Board of Aldermen, comptroller, and mayor's office in spring twenty-twenty-three, working together in partnership to collectively produce a plan for gathering community input during summer of twenty-twenty-three. The community engagement process shall include but not be limited to digital or paper surveying, visu, visual, I'm sorry, virtual or in-person town halls, and virtual or in-person meetings with community stakeholders. Feedback should be sought on but not limited to ways the settlement funds can be leveraged to reverse historic wrongs and invest in disinvested neighborhoods throughout North St. Louis and in pockets of South St. Louis, ways to ensure the basic needs of residents are met, and ways residents can benefit equally from development, including through affordable housing, infrastructure improvements, economic empowerment with small business loans, and technical assistance, workforce development, neighborhood beautification and revitalization, and other related topics, introduced this twentieth day of January twenty-twenty-three by the Honorable Shamene Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman of the twenty-sixth ward, the Honorable Doctor Megan Green, President of the Board of Aldermen, and adopted this twentieth day of January twenty-twenty-three as attested by.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Order.
State the rule with which your port of order pertains.
The rule is that we change our, our last date of which we could have resolutions and our board bills introduced. I don't see any place on it, and it's not been changed, and you're not supposed to read a board bill, I mean, a resolution before it has been introduced, and it couldn't have been introduced because we haven't suspended the rules or sought unanimous consent.
She was simply reading it into the record, we are about to do that.
You are not allowed to do that except for on first reading of the resolution.
This is, this is first reading of resolution.
It is not, because she has not suspended the rules, and she has not sought unanimous consent. You do that afterwards.
She is, she is just about to do that, Alderwoman.
But you do that afterwards, and this is our, what I could read you our rules specifically, it does not allow you to.
You can find the, your point is taken. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Uh, you could try to shut me out, but I'm still gonna continue.
Please, uh, please cut the mic for the Alderwoman.
I have the rule right this...
Okay, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you may proceed. You are out of order, Alderwoman. You are out of order, Alderwoman. Please give your decency to the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you are recognized on the first reading of resolutions. Alderwoman, you are recognized on the first reading of resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President, I ask for unanimous consent.
Seeing objection to unanimous consent, are you asking to send to committee?
Absolutely, I'm asking to be placed, for it to be assigned to the Convention, Tourism, Arts, and Humanities Committee.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that Resolution one seventy-one is sent to Convention and Tourism. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions. The rule, the motion had already been made. The motion had already been made, Alderwoman. Okay, we are moving on with the meeting. Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Point of order!
Please.
Point of order! Pursuant to Rule two, pursuant to Rule fifty-seven, did you send a, a board, a resolution or a board bill to a committee that was not properly before us?
Alderwoman, we have moved past that point of the agenda.
No, we have not moved past. You are just thinking you're gonna bully us, but you're not. You are not following the rules, and I will have it read until the rules, because what we can do, and it's gonna be just what I said, you cannot go ahead and let her read into the, the first, the resolution without first suspending the rules and without, or else, uh, get, uh, unanimous consent. Then you read, only after it's first read. You do not read a resolution when it's not properly on the calendar to be first read. You do not. You are wrong, and you need to read the rules when I'm wrong, I'm said, and then come back and tell us you're wrong.
Point of order is not taken, we will commence with the meeting. Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Resolution number one forty-one, introduced by Co, Alderman Kotar, Four Hands Real Estate LLC in the city of St. Louis, Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the seventh, you are recognized on the resolution, on Resolution one forty-one.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move to final pass Resolution one forty-one.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we approve Resolution number one forty-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, Long-Term Healthcare Special Committee meeting will be at three P.M. via webinar. Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, Neighborhood Development will be meeting at ten A.M. via webinar. Public Safety will meet at one P.M. via webinar. Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, Streets Committee will be meeting at ten A.M. via webinar. Parks, I'm sorry, Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, the Parks Committee will be holding a meeting at three P.M. via webinar. Thursday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, the HUDS Committee will meet at nine A.M. via webinar. Special Trans, Transition Committee will meet at eleven A.M. via webinar, and Ways and Means meeting will be at one P.M. via webinar. Full board meeting will be Friday, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, ten A.M. in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify there, parse Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, at three P.M. I think I heard, did I hear something different?
I'm sorry.
Tuesday, January 24, 3:00 PM.
You wanted Tuesday. Got you there.
Tuesday, January 24, 3:00 PM, Parks.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 26th.
President, members of the board, I would like to announce, you know, I have been going live after the meetings and not giving out my announcements, so I'm not going to hold you off, but this one I did want to announce. If you notice, the Diamond Death Empowerment Foundation's bucket is back out in the hallway like we do every year, collecting full-size personal hygiene items for our unhoused and for our domestic violence survivors. And when I look up around this room, I want to give a shout out to Chris Carter, our city's Supply Commissioner, because he has now teamed up with us this year for the 10th Annual Love Packages Drive. So make sure when you're coming in and out that you drop something in the bucket this year, share it with your networks. This is an amazing organization that does some amazing work. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
I will continue my point of order. If you assigned board bill that Alderman and Orion did for the plumbers to the Health Committee, that is not allowed under our rules, and I will object to it, and I will read it into the rules also. You can, you have to send the plumbers bill to Public Safety per our Rule 57. It is a requirement understanding committees that you send it to the proper, proper committee. You cannot send it to the Health Committee.
It's under advisement. Thank you for your comments.
It is not under advisement. It shall. Shall is mandatory, not permitted.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
I move that we excuse the alderpeople from the 17th and 19th wards due to necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th. Is there a second? Seconded by the Alderwoman from the 20th, that we excuse the aforementioned alderpeople for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adjourn until Friday, January 27, 2023 at 10:00 AM in the chambers.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 20th, that we adjourn until Friday, January 27 in the chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.